Welcome to this evening's meeting of the Westerville City Schools Board of Education. We're delighted to have all of you this evening. The agenda will be displayed on the screen in the front of the room, and you will have two opportunities to address the board. The first being Agenda Item 7.1, the first set of public comments is relative to Agenda Items 8.1 through 12.3. Please state the Agenda Items you are referencing at the beginning of your comments. The second opportunity is Agenda Item 13.1. There is a sign-up sheet located on the table in the back of the room, and each speaker will have five minutes to address the board, and a timer will be shown on the screen. And with that, Ms. Marshall, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Bell?
Here.
Mrs. Meyer?
Here.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Here.
Mrs. Altman?
Here.
Mrs. Davidson?
Here.
Will you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first up on our agenda is an executive session. We're just going to sneak away for a couple of minutes. May I have a motion for an executive to go into executive session to discuss the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of employee, student, or school official, or to investigate charges or complaints against any such person?
So moved.
Second?
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Okay, thank you all for waiting. Up next, district highlights and recognitions, which is always our favorite part. May I have a motion?
So moved.
To approve the resolution to name the Westerville South Athletic Training Room? Sorry. Second?
How about we read it and then vote? Does that work for you guys? Okay. Resolution of endorsement for Bill "Doc" Cool-U Athletic Training Room. Whereas Bill Cool-U had dedicated 36 years, 1979 to 2015, as an educator and athletic trainer for Westerville South High School, making an impact on many students in the classroom as well as in athletics; and whereas he served as the medical provider for numerous state champion teams and state runner-up teams, and provided exceptional healthcare to Wildcat student athletes; and whereas he received multiple honors and awards during his tenure with Westerville City Schools, inducted into the Westerville South Athletic Hall of Fame, 1996, Westerville Educator of the Year, 1998, Gregory I. Brooks Memorial Award, 2004, Westerville City Schools Great Educator Mentor Award, 2010; and whereas his external leadership and accolades were OATA, OATA, Ohio Athletic Trainers Association President-elect, 2002 to 2004, President, 2004 to 2006, past President, 2006 to 2008, Treasurer, 2008 to 2010, and OATA High School Athletic Trainer of the Year, 1996, NATA Service Award, 2003, OATA Linda Weber Daniel Outstanding Mentorship Award, 2008; and whereas his service with the United States Olympic Committee Medical Staff include multiple international assignments, including the Pan-American Games in Mar del Plata, Argentina, in 1995, and the World Transplant Games in 1997, now therefore be it resolved that the Westerville City Schools Board of Education and Superintendent recognize Bill Cool-U's legacy of excellence by proclaiming that the Athletic Training Room at Westerville South High School be known as the Bill "Doc" Cool-U Athletic Training Room. It's dated November 21st, 2022.
Ready to vote? Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. And I'd like to welcome Scott Dorn to the podium, and we're going to go up to the front and do some handshaking.
Mr. Cool-U. Good evening, President Davidson, Vice President Altman, members of the Board, Dr. Kellogg and Ms. Marshall. Tonight it is my great pleasure to introduce to you, on behalf of Westerville South High School and on behalf of our nominator, Lauren Orth from Ohio Health, to introduce you to Bill Cool-U, affectionately known as Doc. Bill had a 35-year career as an educator at the high school and has served as the head athletic trainer for 32 of those years. While the resolution presented here presented many accomplishments of Mr. Cool-U's impactful career, I would like to share a few things that were not included. Bill has served as a mentor for many educators, including myself. He opened the door with his student athletic training program for many of our alumni to become licensed and begin careers as athletic trainers. And when you reflect on the meaningful impact of programs or leadership roles such as PBIS, Continuous Improvement Site Councils, BLTs, it's not hard for those of us who worked with him to see that Bill helped fill those roles for South High School long before they were defined. Bill was also the first international baccalaureate diploma program cas coordinator for the district. He led multiple student volunteer trips to provide opportunities for students to provide relief efforts after Hurricane Katrina. In general, Bill's career represents more than just the accolades from the athletic arenas across the district, or for Bill, across the world, many of those you heard moments ago. Mr. Bill Cool-U, Doc as we lovingly call him, is just as deserving of this recognition as a well-admired educator. Members of the Board, Bill Cool-U.
You should tell him. Okay, up next on our agenda, Reports 5.1. We do not have any this evening, which takes us to 6.1, Approval of the Minutes of the Board of Education Meeting Held Monday, October 24th, as presented. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments are here? Questions? Hearing none?
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
I'm going to abstain, I wasn't here.
Okay. Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
We do not have any public comments this evening so far, which takes us to financials. 8.1, the Five-Year Forecast. May I have a motion? Well, I'll take a motion to approve, you can present it, and then we can vote. Is that okay? All right, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And then we'll... Sure. Sounds good.
Is this on? Okay, great. President Davidson, members of the Board, tonight I am presenting to you our November forecast. So we will do this forecast, and then we have an update coming up in May before the end of the fiscal year. But this will be our first forecast of the year. The purpose of the forecast is a valuable long-range planning tool that we use to project where we think we might go within the next five years. It serves as our basis for approving a 412 certificate, which allows us to approve long-term contracts, salary schedules, and appropriations. And it also gives the Ohio Department of Education and the State Auditor's Office a method for evaluating school districts' fiscal stewardship. And I did include some pictures, so just a preview of what's going to be in the upcoming Popular Annual Financial Report, our PAFRA that we do each year. So here's some fourth graders from Whittier Elementary that had practiced a play written by one of their classmates, and so I thought it was a really cool picture for this slide. So the requirements of the forecast, we include a five-year projection. So with the current fiscal year being the first year of the five years, we file it no later than November 30th. And then we also include three years of history for historical purposes. And then we have to update the projection no later than May 31st and submit it to ODE. So we do file it with ODE both in November and in May. The forecast, I like to look at it in three separate parts. So it only includes our General Operating Fund. And we have lines 1.01 through 2.08, which are our revenue lines. And then expenditures run lines 3.01 through 5.05. And then our balances and reserves, those fall under lines 6.01 through 15.01. And our picture here, we have some fifth graders at Robert Frost at Sharon Woods on a field trip. So looking at challenges of this forecast, and it's true for most forecasts that I present to you, I know these challenges tend to just linger. So as we look at state funding, we'll talk a little bit about the state budget process. Our legislative changes, we're continually working against different ways that our legislators like to take money away from us. Our property tax values and collections, and then any federal funding. So as you all know, we've had a lot of ESAR funds throughout the last couple of years, thanks to COVID. And as we look at federal funds going forward and what that looks like, speaking of challenging, Westerville Central High School student explored gene therapy as a way to potentially... Oh, I can't even read that now. Treat genetic conditions, disorders. Yeah, and a lot of stuff I don't understand, so... That was great for this slide. And just a reminder that all of our projections are based on the best information we have available at the time of the forecast. Most definitely will change going forward as things change, as we go forward. So our most notable changes from the May forecast, which is the last forecast we did at the end of last fiscal year. So we're in a new fiscal year this year, so we have an additional year. Fiscal year '27 is on the tail end of the forecast. We have seen the House Bill 126 eliminate our ability to do Board of Revision settlements. And this caused an influx of one-time revenue to the district because as that was going away, all of the cases that we had outstanding, the property owners approached us about hurrying up and settling those cases before the bill went into effect. So that caused a one-time spike in our revenue that we were not anticipating. And then our interest revenue has also increased significantly over the past two years. And that's, if anybody's been paying attention, the federal government... that's, if anybody's been paying attention, the Federal Reserve continues to raise interest rates, which means that we are returning, we are having a higher return on our investments. And our inflation remains, inflation just remains at a high in all of the areas. So those are the most notable changes from the forecast in May. And that's a picture of Twinkle, the facility dog at Westerville South High School, but also goes across the district. For ESAR federal funds, so we have been very strategic in how we have applied the federal funds to help offset revenue losses in our general operating account. So the ESAR funds have provided, so for ESAR I, they have provided $2 million for us. ESAR II was $9.5 million, and ESAR III was $21.1 million. And you can see our availability to spend those funds for each of those grant periods. So what we've done is we've taken portions of the ESAR funds to help offset expenditures in the general fund to help with the loss of revenue that we saw thanks to COVID. And these are not part of the general fund, they're not part of the forecast, but they reduce expenditures in the forecast because they're in another fund, which is why I mentioned them here. This is just a graph of our revenues. As you can see, fiscal year, the actual fiscal year, if this works, yeah, is right here, fiscal year '22, which is where we ended, and this is the current fiscal year, fiscal year '23, and there's that large spike because of the influx of the elimination of the Board of Revision settlements and the one-time settlements that we had from that. Just a note about revenues, we did have issue eight that was first collected in calendar year '21, and then Fair School Funding Formula, which is only partially implemented by the state legislature. When we look at the makeup of our revenues for the general fund, we, in fiscal year '22, which is the last fiscal year, we received about 66% from our local property taxes and about 27% overall from state revenues. And then the other 7% are just miscellaneous revenues, some federal and some other local funds. What's projected for fiscal year '27 in this forecast, not a lot of change in the makeup of our revenues, so we're projecting to be at 67% of local property taxes and 26% at I did that for Greg Veebrants. So, local property taxes, we, in total, the real estate property taxes, the general property tax real estate, is projected to be 64.5% of total revenues in fiscal year '23. We are assuming a 99% collection rate. I will make a note that during COVID, we anticipated to see a much lower collection rate. That didn't really materialize, so we've been very fortunate about that. And so that's what we've projected going forward, is the 99%. We have the 5.9 mil operating levy that was approved back in 2019, and fiscal year '22, last fiscal year, was the first full year of collections that we saw for that levy. We are assuming modest increases to values. We have a reappraisal coming up in calendar year '23, so it'll be for collection year '24. And we expect just a slight increase from values for the inside millage, and then all of our voted millages subject to the House Bill 920 reduction factor that we talked about. And then tangible, personal, public utility property taxes are a total of 2.6% of our State funding, so this is always fun to try to predict. So we have a new biennium budget. So our biennium budget right now is fiscal year '22 and '23, so that's the one that we're operating in right now. So fiscal year '22 was last year ended June 30th, and now we're in fiscal year '23. We did have the Fair School Funding Plan implemented as part of this biennium budget. The state did not fully fund it, so they, the original idea was to phase it in over a six-year period. The legislature only committed to the two-year period, so by the end of this fiscal year, they will have funded one-third of the increases that the Fair School Funding Plan would have provided for us. So, looking at... The Fair School Funding Plan did eliminate our transfers going to community charter schools and private schools and scholarships. So that's been a positive because we did, those were costs that we did see growing at a very high rate. The funding formula also reduced our revenue by the amount of those transfers. So there was no net gain to us. It was a zero-sum game at the end of the day. So this forecast assumes that we will see flat funding going forward from the state because we have no guarantee that the state will do anything different in the next biennium from what they're doing now. So we have a new biennium budget for fiscal year '24 and '25, so that will be coming, we'll start, we actually have already started those conversations, but coming into next spring, it will be really heavy in talking with our legislators and advocating for the continuance of the Fair School Funding Plan. And then our next biennium budget will be fiscal year '26 and '27. So this forecast covers three different biennium budgets. And property tax allocation, those are reimbursements from the state for rollback and homestead. Rollback went away with any levies after 2013, but we continue to receive reimbursements from the state for those old levies. That is subject to the biennium budget process as well, so there's always a possibility that that could go away. This forecast assumes that it will remain as is. For all other revenues, excuse me, these include our payment in lieu of taxes, the Board of Revision settlements that we talked about, interest revenue, tuition, student fees, and other miscellaneous receipts. Again, notable changes, interest rates had decreased significantly during the pandemic in fiscal year '21 and '22, and they have returned to pre-pandemic levels in fiscal year '23. So we're hoping that that stays for a while. And then House Bill 126, we had a one-time influx of $6 million this year, which is causing that large increase this year. And then our other financing resources, those include refunded prior expenditures. These are one-time receipts typically we get for Medicaid reimbursement and other just miscellaneous items. Our revenue uncertainty, we're looking at state funding, so we had significant cuts made in fiscal year '20 and '21 because of the pandemic, the new funding formula in '22 and '23, and then we have our new biennium budgets, like I mentioned previously, in '24, '25, and then '26 and '27. So there's a lot that is open for interpretation. And then property values, property tax collections, the economy and legislative changes, we continue to keep an eye on all of those things. I do like this picture, kids from Wilder Elementary's K-Club. First-ever Westerville-prepared community that they were participating in. For expenditures, we do anticipate our expenditures to increase throughout the forecast period as the cost of doing business increases. This includes opening Minerva France Elementary School this year, so we're all very excited to have that open this year, and then Minerva Park Middle School next year, and then we have the portion of the ESAR funds that we're using to offset revenue losses. This is the makeup of our expenditures, actual for fiscal year '22, and then our projections for fiscal year '27. And this is a picture of our Warrior Way leadership at Westerville North High School. There's more pictures in the PAFRA, you guys, so keep an eye out for that coming. Personnel, so in total, for fiscal year '22, they made up 81% of our total expenditures. We are using estimates from the district staffing plan for fiscal year '23 and '24. For fiscal years '25 through '27, it includes adding the average cost of five certified and one and a half classified FTE on an annual basis. It also includes our new staff from Minerva France, and then new staff for Minerva Park Middle School beginning next year. And then, we do have a one-time 27th pay period in the fiscal year. No one's getting paid extra because of this, it's just how the calendar falls, but it is an extra expense in the fiscal year for the district. And then, that's the last bullet there is about the ESAR funds that we've reduced expenses This is just a graph of other expenditures, so just a little bit of everything there, purchase services, we have utilities, tuition for special needs and other students, like out-of-district placements and that sort of thing. Materials and supplies includes our textbooks, software licenses, consumable items, anything that doesn't have a long-term useful life. Their capital outlay includes our equipment and our technology. And then, Other Objects is mostly made up of our staff that's purchased through the ESTCO. And then Operating Transfers Out, we have transfers to our permanent improvement for turf replacement, and then also we've budgeted some for Food Service Fund. And we do anticipate our expenses to be back at pre-pandemic levels, and also inflation is really uncertain going forward. We've seen it in a lot of different places, so we continue to keep an eye on that. And our expenditure uncertainty, our staffing needs, the educational needs of students, as we all know, that changes rapidly, the economy and inflation, our healthcare costs, and our legislative mandates. And this is a Charrington Elementary music teacher working with, on video editing for a school's news show, Charrington Live, I think is what it's called. So our Changes in Balance, this is a graph of the total forecast, the three years' history included. So the green line is our revenues projected. As you can see, we're projecting our revenues to remain relatively flat. And then our expenditures are in the red, and we anticipate those to increase significantly throughout the forecast period. And then, the blue line is our balance, our fund balance. As you can see, as our revenues remain flat and our expenditures increase, we anticipate that our balance to decline pretty rapidly throughout the forecast period. And all of the things we mentioned before opening the new schools, the operating levy that were passed, this projection shows a 32-day unreserved cash balance projected for fiscal year '27, and we are able to maintain the $19 million reserve with that. And then, any future levies will depend on what the state does with its budget, obviously, and we'll continue to keep an eye on that.
No.
Just want to make one comment. I just want to thank you for the time you spent with individual board members, helping all of us to understand what was all in the report. I appreciated it a great deal, appreciate your diligence in putting this together and in making sure we were all up to speed.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you. And you did cover it sort of in broad brush, but I'm just wondering if you might be able to sort of call out for us where you think, I don't want to call it vulnerabilities in the forecast, but where you think potential changes are that could cause, you know, maybe a greater swing than we're anticipating one direction or the other. Obviously, state funding is one.
Right. So state funding is one, but aside from state funding, the state legislators, there's always something coming down the pike as far as bills that are outstanding, and a lot of things come down in the name of economic development that takes funding away from schools, specifically in property taxes that were already voted and approved by our community to come to the schools. So, just an example, there's a bill outstanding right now that would, right now, under community reinvestment areas, there is an income tax revenue sharing that has to happen under the state statute, and that's if the payroll exceeds $1 million. The bill that's coming down the pike is wanting to change that threshold to $3 million. I don't know any reason for that change. It's just, it's things like that, like the House Bill 126 that takes away our ability to negotiate, to ensure that taxpayers are paying their fair share for property taxes, those sorts of things. That's what really picks at us and the revenue. So, I mean, obviously, the state foundation formula and how that's calculated, and if they would fully fund it would be super great, but I think just as we are moving forward and looking at, we just have to keep an eye on all of the things that continue to come out. I know everybody likes to have a bill put in when they join the legislature, so.
Yeah, thanks. I think it really helps to underscore how things can change pretty quickly. I mean, most of those are, they can be sizable.
They can be.
In terms of dollars. So that's why we try to keep an eye on.
Yeah, just thinking of another bill, there's another bill by a legislator about increasing the employer contribution to the retirement fund for state teachers, and that's a significant cost that's not in the forecast. So if that were to go forward, that would be an additional expense to the forecast that we don't have anticipated.
And you do a great job of tracking those things that may have an impact, so thank you for that.
We work really hard to keep track of those things, so, yeah. And we do a lot of advocacy for the district with those areas.
Thanks.
So I just want to say a quick thank you. Really appreciate your presentation. Love that you put the kiddos in there, kind of a friendly reminder of why we are doing what we do, which again, why we're in this room. I love that we're here tonight. I know it was a lot to move us and get us here, but a little reminder.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely.
Oh, yeah, please.
Just for people to better understand, when you say partially funded, you explain that, but what happens next? Like, what has to happen next to be funded?
Yeah, that's a great question. So because the foundation formula is part of the biennium budget process, it has to go through what I call the sausage-making factory, right? So the governor will introduce his budget, and then the House will introduce their budget, and then the Senate will introduce their budget, and then everyone will try to come to a conclusion of what that budget should look like. And the school foundation funding formula is a part of that, right? So it includes all the things, the Medicaid, prisons, all the things, the parks, like everything. So, schools are a part of that. And then also, we have our private schools and the scholarships and the community charter schools, those are also part of that. So now they're separate, they're a separate line item in the budget, but that's something that we're constantly competing with for education in Ohio, which is one of the reasons why we're part of the lawsuit regarding fair school funding with, yeah.
Thank you. And I want to echo my colleagues' comments. Thanks for doing all this and being diligent and watching. You do a really fantastic job.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Great. Any other questions?
Whenever you're ready, take your time.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. 8.2, Resolution to Approve the Purchases in accordance to ORC 5705.41 and Board Policy 6320. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
And Ms. Marshall?
Yes, thank you. So, we have a then-and-now purchase order. So these are purchase orders that were in place after the date of the invoice. In both cases, the money has been budgeted for, but the purchase order wasn't opened timely for the Ohio Coalition for Equity and Adequacy of School Funding. This is actually the lawsuit that I was referring to earlier. We did have a purchase order open, but because of late invoicing, it did get closed, so we had to reopen it, so it has a later date on it. Any questions about that?
Hearing none?
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. 8.3, May I have a motion to approve the financial report and investments for October 2022?
So moved.
Second.
Whenever you're ready. I know we're hurrying you tonight.
Thank you. So we are going over October's month-end financials. So for general fund, we had year-to-date receipts of $95.1 million and year-to-date expenditures of $64.4 million, and we ended with an unencumbered balance for October of $179.8 million. For all funds, we had year-to-date receipts of $122.4 million and year-to-date expenditures of $107.2 million, and we ended with an unencumbered balance of $244.7 million. And that's all I have for that.
Any questions or comments here? Hearing none?
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes, and I also vote yes on 802, which I don't think my name was said.
Did I not say your name?
It doesn't matter. Just mark that I voted yes on both of them.
I'm sorry, I marked you down. You voted, oh, you're right. I'm so sorry.
It's not, it's not a big deal.
Please interrupt me next time. Sorry, sorry. Mrs., Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. 8.4, may I have a motion to amend the fiscal year 2023 annual appropriations?
So moved.
Second.
So we are adjusting the annual appropriations to be in line with the five-year forecast for the general fund. We have some increased budgets in our public school, those are our principals' funds, and our district-managed student activity funds. And then we had some carryover from grants and some unspent auxiliary funds that are being returned to the state. So those are actually money to private schools, it's not actually district money, but it runs through our district. And then we have a new grant under other state grants. Any questions?
Hearing none.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. Is it okay if I take this personnel consent agenda as one? Okay. May I have a motion for the personnel consent agenda, 9.1 through 9.11?
So moved.
Second.
Welcome, Carrie.
Good evening. Thank you, President Davidson, members of the board, Dr. Calogramis, Ms. Marshall. I would like to present to you for your consideration tonight's personnel consent agenda. The items on tonight's agenda represent our regular action items with regards to resignations, hiring, and contractual status changes. There are a couple items, however, to note on tonight's agenda. There are a number of winter supplementals for your approval as the winter seasons have started. We have four retirements this evening. Please join me in congratulating Julia Perone retiring from Ann Hurst Elementary School with 24 years of service, Timothy Lawrence retiring from Westerville Central with 32 years of service, Amy Cruiser retiring from Faust Elementary School with 34 years of service, and Vicky Moss retiring as the principal of Mark Twain Elementary School with 25 years of service to Westerville City Schools. Their work in the district equals a combined 115 years of dedicated service, so we want to thank them for that. I'm happy to try and answer any questions you might have this time.
Hearing none?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. Is everyone okay if we do old business as one motion also? May I have a motion for old business, 10.1 and 10.2, policy, I'm sorry, let me start out. May I have a motion for old business, 10.1, policy 7440, and 10.2, policy 8210?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments here? Hearing none?
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. And that takes us to new business, 11.1, first reading, policy 5111. And I'd like to welcome Scott Ebert.
I wasn't hearing as well. Mark had to say, "You're up." All right. This is just a revision to policy 5111. We've worked over the past few weeks with my enrollment team to ensure that our policy aligns with our practice and also make sure that we're meeting requirements through the state as well. So we're in alignment now with this policy revision as to our practice, and also just to clean up some other language that was a little bit superfluous, so, okay? Questions?
No. Hearing none. Thank you so much for joining.
Thank you, Madam President.
11.2, first reading for policy 3120.8, employment of personnel for co-curricular and extracurricular activities. Mr. Cooper, welcome.
Good evening. We have three items. This first one, as you noted here, is for 3120.08. This is for employment of personnel for co-curricular and extracurricular activities. Specifically, this is an update to policy to clarify requirements for coaches and supervisors of activities who do not have a valid teaching license, which requires them to get a P A P or a pupil activity permit even if the activity doesn't involve athletics, physical activity, or health and safety risks. So it does require all requirements of that pupil activity permit. Essentially, this clarification ensures that those without a teaching license have gained enough training through the P A P process to supervise our students. Any questions?
Want to go to the next, you got me to?
Sure. Yeah. Jumping into the next policy here that we have for the first reading this evening, the Fair Labor Standards Act, policy number 6700. And the, this is just noting and adding a section to clarify expectations for break times for nursing mothers. And that is the only update to this policy. It's just clarification.
Any questions or comments on this one? Nope. Hearing none?
And then policy 8320 is our final policy for personnel this evening. This is for personnel files. And just noting here that under the previous version of the law, program participants were not required to provide government entities with a copy of their program authorization code for the Safe at Home program. The current version of the law now requires program participants to provide their program authorization card specifically that's been issued by the Secretary of State as proof of their enrollment in the program.
Any questions or comments here? Hearing none, thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Have a good night.
Recommended action, 12.1, donations. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
And we are just so very grateful for all these generous donations that positively impact our district. Yep.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. 12.2, appointment to the Westerville Public Library Board of Trustees. Tiffany Cooper may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments here? Hearing none?
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. 12.3, overnight and out-of-state field trips. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Welcome, Ms. Baldwin.
Good evening, President Davidson, members of the board, Dr. Calogramis, Ms. Marshall. We have four field trips for you to consider this evening. First, Westerville North, our cheer team is going to be participating in National High School Cheer Championship in February. Our Westerville South softball team will be participating in scrimmages in Pigeon Forge, Tennessee over spring break. Westerville North science team is looking to go back to Costa Rica. This would be a repeat trip from last year. They had a really neat experience, and this opportunity for more students to participate, and that will take place in June. And then the final request is from our thespian team at Westerville South to attend the State Thespian Conference in April. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Hearing none?
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. And that takes us to 13.1, public comments, which we do not have any this evening, which takes us to 14.1, board comments. Would anyone like to go first and make any comments?
Sure, I can go. I have a kind of a lengthy list of some legislation, but just really want to say thanks for the donations and congratulations to those retiring. So House Bill 565 had a sponsor testimony, or sponsor hearing, in the House and Primary Secondary Education Committee. And if this is passed, the legislation would add five students as non-voting members to the State Board of Education. Then there's Senate Bill 178. It had its first hearing in the Senate Primary and Secondary Education Committee, and it would reform the functions and responsibilities of the State Board of Education, the Superintendent of Public Instruction, and the Ohio Department of Education. A substitute version of the bill is forthcoming. The provisions that will be included in the substitute bill would include creating a Department of Education workforce with a cabinet-level director appointed by the governor and approved by the Senate, dividing the agency into two divisions, the Division of Primary and Secondary Education, which will also include preschool, and the Division of Career Technical Education, authorizing the new department to be responsible for the rulemaking process and enforcement of current rules, and maintaining the current structure of the State Board of Education, but limiting its duties to teacher license, educator, or staff conduct, and territory transfer decisions. The chairman has stated that it's, that is his intent to hold several hearings, this is Chairman Brenner, on the bill over the next few weeks and hold a committee vote before the end of this year. So not much time. I would say contact your legislators. Sponsor testimony was also heard on House Bill 554, and it would require the State Board of Education to issue two-year temporary educator license to applicants with expired professional teacher certificates and professional educator license as long as certain requirements are met. The Senate Finance Committee held sponsor testimony on Senate Bill 329, which would provide a full or partial tax exemption to developers and owners of newly constructed homes within specified areas during the construction period and for 10 years after the home is occupied. And then the House Criminal Justice Committee accepted a substitute version of House Bill 459, which would prohibit an individual in the restricted offender category from being in a position as an employer, employee, independent contractor, or volunteer with any person, group, or organization that has extensive contact with minor children. The substitute bill would remove provisions related to employment and now only pertains to volunteer positions. Lastly, there are some things before the State Board of Education. They passed a resolution that would recommend to the General Assembly to repeal a provision mandating the retention of third-grade students who do not meet the minimum score on the third-grade English Language Arts Assessment. They also passed a resolution that would start the process of selecting a search firm to assist in hiring a state superintendent of public instruction. And then the last thing that's before them, the Executive Committee of the State Board of Education passed a resolution regarding proposed federal changes to Title IX. And I want to be really clear that this is a resolution being put forward by the State Board of Education, and that I have some real concerns about. And they'll vote on it in the December board meeting. So, not to belabor, but I want to read this so I don't summarize it, so thank you for bearing with me. It was, it's to oppose the proposed changes to Title IX into affirm parental rights and local control of Ohio K through 12 education. And the concept of education rests on the understanding that there are objective facts and absolute truths. Biological sex, male and female, is one such objective scientific fact. Sex is not arbitrarily assigned at birth, but rather it defines observable, quantifiable differences between males and females. The Webster Dictionary defines sex as either of the two major forms of individuals that occur in many species and that are distinguished respectively as female or male, especially on the basis of their reproductive organs and structures. Denying the reality of biological sex destroys foundational truths upon which education rests, to safeguarding the well-being of children, and to support parents, schools, and districts in doing the same. The State Board of Education hereby adopts the following resolution. Whereas the Ohio State Board of Education's sacred oath of office is to uphold and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and whereas Title IX of the Education Amendments of 1972 was enacted into law based on the Declaration of Independence, promise of equal rights, to ensure that no person in the United States shall, on the basis of sex, be excluded from participation in, be denied the benefits of, or subjected to discrimination under any education program or activity receiving federal financial assistance. Further original existing Title IX regulations acknowledge physiological differences between the male and female sexes. And whereas on July 12, 2022, the U.S. Department of Education entered into the Federal Registry for Public Comment Proposed Regulatory Changes to Title IX that contradict the plain language of the original law, illegally bypasses the legislative process and undermines the very protection for female students that Title IX sought to provide. And whereas the proposed regulations would prohibit schools that receive federal funds from adopting a policy or engaging in a practice that prevents a person from participating in education program or activity consistent with their gender identity, thereby compelling schools to deny biological reality. And whereas the proposed regulations would potentially derive federal-funded educational institutions, employees, and students of the First Amendment right to free speech, and whereas the proposed regulations pertaining to athletics would require sports teams to be based on gender identity rather than biological sex, causing biological women and girls to compete on unfair basis against biological males, further schools would be required to create access to sex-separated facilities based on gender identity rather than biological sex. And whereas the proposed regulations would effectively require K through 12 schools to socially transition minor children to a different gender without requiring parental consent, involvement, or notification, and whereas the board acknowledges the pain experienced by those suffering with gender dysphoria, and that decisions regarding the appropriate course of action for minor students experience symptoms of gender dysphoria rightfully belong in the hands of parents rather than the state. And whereas the Ohio law, the United States Constitution and legal precedent, precedents, recognize the right of parents to direct education, upbringing, and physical and mental health of their children. In the 1972 case, Wisconsin versus Yoder, the United States Supreme Court declared that the primary role of the parents in the bringing their children is now established beyond debate as enduring American tradition. Now therefore be it resolved that the State Board of Education declares its empathetic support for Title IX of the Education Amendments of 1972 considers the original and authentic meaning of the law to be historical and continuing pillar in upholding the rights and opportunities of women and girls, and unequivocally opposes the proposed regulatory changes released by the U.S. Department of Education on July 12, 2022. Be it further resolved that the board supports the efforts of the Ohio Attorney General in safeguarding federal nutritional assistance for students in needs which may be in jeopardy due to the new Department of Agriculture rules, and be it further resolved that the State Board of Education calls upon the General Assembly to resist federal executive branch attempts to undermine the original intent of Title IX. The board urges the General Assembly to safeguard the invaluable rights of parents, innocence of children, the rights, privacy, safety, and opportunities of women, girls, in schools, and athletics, and local control of school districts as defined in Chapter 3313 of the Higher Advice Code. And I promise I'm almost done. And be it further resolved, the board directs the acting superintendent of Public Instruction to issue within 21 calendar days a mailed copy of this resolution in a cover letter approved by the board president to every Ohio public school district and to every Ohio elementary or secondary school or preschool program licensed by the Department of Education receiving federal funds. For public school districts, the cover letter and copy of this resolution shall be mailed to the district superintendent and to each district board member. The cover letter shall indicate that the state board opposes the proposed regulatory changes released by the U.S. Department of Education on June 23, 2022. The applicable U.S. Department of Education guidance documents have been enjoined by a U.S. District Court and therefore enforceable at this time. The State Board disagrees with the rule promulgated by the Department of Agriculture on June 14, 2022. And while this rule currently remains in effect, the Ohio Attorney General has joined with 21 other state attorneys general in seeking injunction of relief from the new USDA rule. This correspondence is intended to inform schools and districts not to compel them to take a particular course of action. Be it further resolved that this action that the State Board of Education expresses its unwavering commitment to excellence in education for all, education that empowers each student to flourish, to succeed, and to reach his or her full potential as a member of the next generation of Ohioans. So that was a lot to digest, I know, and I'm sorry that I read it all, but I didn't want to interpret it for anybody. But they're going to be voting on it in December, the State Board of Education. Mm-hmm. That's it for me. That's it for me.
Want to go?
Sure.
Christie, you mentioned a number of things of great importance. And I am struck by the extraordinary importance of the proposed legislation that would effectively turn the State Board of Education into a minor bureaucratic function in the approach to education in this state. The efforts to remove the electors from the selection of the State Board of Education really took hold during the Voinovich years, when the State Board was divided into half-elected board members and half-board members appointed by the governor. Prior to that, the State Board of Education was elected. It hasn't gone well, and I think people across political spectrum here in Ohio agree, although for different reasons oftentimes, that that kind of split hasn't worked very well for us. However, the effort in hand at this point in time is extraordinarily worrisome because of what it means to the determination of the public education system of the state of Ohio. If the State Board of Education is minimized, and if its capacities are diminished to the point of, in many ways, bureaucratic box-checking, then we will have a state public education system that is utterly at the whim of the General Assembly, and that will further put barriers in place between the electors of this state and the public education system that they own. It is deeply concerning to me, especially as you think about the list of potential legislation that Christie was reading to us. Whatever your thoughts are about those various pieces, there is no doubt that they are massively important. I do think it's worth calling out that even though I have roundly criticized the Department of Education a number of times, still and all, I don't want that right taken away from me and placed in the hands of the General Assembly and the governor. The third-grade reading guarantee, which was launched with great angst and great fanfare and great suggestion that it would be the cure-all for education failure to achieve, is quietly, in many ways, being talked about, rolling back at this point in time. Thank goodness. That's a real positive. And we need to be thinking about what it means as it suggests significant change in understanding of what high-stakes testing does to children, to families, to educators, to systems, and not so much to achievement. So that is an interesting piece. The other piece that I actually wasn't aware of until you mentioned this tonight, Christie, is the part about the tax credits, tax breaks on new home construction, where the children are, and where the funding comes from to educate those children. That is one of those remarkable exigencies that Nicole was referring to in her five-year forecast, when we talk about things out of our control that affect the forecast, that then cause us and every other community in the state to have to shift, readjust, make changes, find ways to deal with those legislative requirements. That's a problematic one. It's one that we are going to have to follow very closely. As Nicole said, as John has said many times, there's a great deal of advocacy that goes on in this school district from all of your officials. That'll continue. So this is a, Christie, your report was very important tonight, and I don't want any piece of it to get lost in the important discussion around the Title IX resolution. There is much to consider, and much that is of great impact to every single person in this state.
I would like to congratulate and thank our retirees for their many years of, over 100 years collectively of dedicated service to the students, community of Westerville, and to the Westerville City School District. I would also, I think it's, well, I'd like to acknowledge heavy heart because of a lot of the violence that our nation and education has experienced recently with three young men losing their lives to violence on the campus of the University of Virginia. Two others were also injured. Four young people lost their lives on the campus of the University of Idaho. And to wake up on yesterday and to hear of another mass shooting in an attack in a nightclub attacking the LGBTQ community. Condemn, I condemn violence in all of its various forms, and certainly pray for the families of all of those that have been affected. And I'll just end off by saying, happy Thanksgiving to everyone. So hope everybody has a safe and happy holiday later on this week.
Thanks. Boy, it's a lot of, it's real mixed feelings up here after that report, Christie. Thanks for, no, no, I mean, it's so important. Thank you for going into detail. I do want to back up and also congratulate our retirees. It's unbelievable, really, the number of years they've contributed to this district, so thank you for that. I want to thank Ms. Marshall. The five-year forecast is a real, it's a real labor. And some of the things that you were alluding to, you know, make it really difficult, really difficult for us to think five years out. And so we have to do it. It's important to do it, but there are so many uncertainties, and your report really highlighted that. So thanks for bringing that. And, you know, Dr. Kellogg, I don't want to put you on the spot, you may not have anything to say about this, but the ODE reorg, SB 178, is there anything that would be helpful for folks to understand in terms of just operationally how you're seeing that would change the way our public school districts function? Or is it sort of too early to comment on that?
I think it's, the obvious big pieces is now who's in control and the changes and fluctuations of what does that mean as political winds change across the state. Some of what we're seeing now is just this massive reach in the public education around all kinds of policy pieces coming out from the legislators. Very little of it seems to be helpful to the greater cause that we're trying to do, from increased efforts to shift the wave we're funded, underfund us, and move money elsewhere. Efforts to gain control over limitations to local choice about what we teach our students, what we find to be valuable to them, finding that some of the changes they make, like third-grade reading guarantee, when we tell them that there's some poor design to that, not listening, and then discovering later that we were right, and it was a poor choice. So not honoring the voice of those who do the work in any policy position is tremendously bad practice and typically leads to outcomes that don't work for people, and that's where I would say this one lands. I'm very concerned about this particular one because it is a massive overreach that needs to be addressed. And there have been preliminary conversations, but I think we're also staring, and I think that Ms. Meyer was kind of alluding to it, is we're in a lame duck session. All right? And these are when the most, some of the most aggressive and least palatable things for some constituents happen, and we're staring at that precipice right here. And many of these things we're talking about are coming up real quick. We'll have limited time for people to respond. We'll be given limited opportunity for light to be shown on all sides. We see that happen as well. And so in the brief conversation that I was in with Senator Brenner and some other superintendents, it wasn't a give-and-take, what do you think? It was, let me tell you what we're thinking about doing. Not, what do you think of this? It was, let me tell you what we're thinking about doing because frankly, you know, we're not happy with the current limits to the control we have. And I just think that's bad practice. When you don't know the work, when you don't do the work, you should be thoughtful about how you critique the work. So we'll continue to advocate in that one, and all those keeps us busy, but that's part of the work. So these are the ones I'm going to stay on top of.
Thank you. Thanks. It's helpful to have your perspective on that. I think I cannot underscore how important it is to keep our eyes on that one. So thanks for being part of those conversations and for highlighting it. And I also want to express my concern over the State Board of Education's resolution opposing the Title IX changes. Boy, we got to stay on top of that. And the impacts that that would have on multiple different populations, especially LGBTQ-plus students, I think we would just really need to stay on top of that and understand what that would mean. So just encourage everybody to actually go and take some time with that very long resolution. Thank you for highlighting that tonight. But actually, go and read it, please, and spend some time hearing the words that are in it. So, thank you.
I think it's worth pointing out that although the State Board is passing a resolution, it has no direct impact on our current policy and practices. So we will maintain the course we're on. Our current Title IX policy does include gender identity and sexual orientation as part of protected class, and I don't see this board wavering from that, and I wouldn't make that recommendation. I think it serves us well, making resolve anything they want. But I would, I would give them notice, particularly those that are elected, I would give them notice about your thoughts about it.
Thank you. I just want to echo my colleagues' concerns, and I want to say a huge thank you to you, Christie. You have taken on the legislative piece with such grace, and you really are educating not just us, but the community, and I really appreciate how you're doing that. We've talked about doing that for years, and you're doing a really great job. So I really appreciate it. And then I just want to say happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Be safe. So, I can't see, hold on. 15.1, the board will meet in regular session on Monday, December 12, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. here at the Early Learning Center. And with that, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Jen.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. And with that, we're adjourned.